Good evening and welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. Brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Houston Education Fund and Houston Media Source. Tonight, we'll be talking to candidates for City Council at-large Position 4. Remember, if you're a voter anywhere in the city of Houston, you can cast your ballot for any of these candidates on November 3rd. I'm Chris Banks and this is my co-host Fran Watson.
Sure. Roy Morales is a business owner that focuses on information in alternative energy, technology, crisis management, and education improvement. Roy is nationally recognized as an expert on disaster planning and homeland security. In 2006, Roy was elected as Harris County School Trustee, representing approximately 1 million residents in Precinct 1. During his six-year term, Roy consistently voted to either freeze or lower your property taxes. So let's welcome Mr. Roy Morales.
Well, thank you so much for having me here this evening.
Well, it's good. Glad you were able to come. I know we're on a time limit, so let's go ahead and just jump right into it and give you a few questions.
Okay.
So our first question, and same as we asked before, Houston has been ranked the 15th worst major city in terms of income inequality. What are your plans to bridge the gaps caused by that?
Well, my whole plan is about growing our business. That's what's important. So we all have the ability to earn a living, to send our kids to school, and just enjoy Houston. My plan calls for bringing businesses here, being a business-friendly city. We should never have lost Toyota to San Antonio. We should never have lost Exxon to the Woodlands. We want companies to come here. We want the city to be business-friendly. When we're business-friendly and these companies come here, that means jobs. That means good-paying jobs. We're not talking about jobs just at a fast-food restaurant. We're talking about jobs that require trades, require skills, and that's how we overcome inequality.
So, the Houston City Charter has a very strong mayor system, and City Council members really have little power delegated to them under the charter. So faced with these limitations, how are you going to effect change as a City Council member?
Well, I think that I have a good rapport with all of the candidates who are running for mayor. They know Roy Morales. They know Roy Morales takes on projects and succeeds, just like in the Air Force and just like when I was with the Houston Emergency Center. I was able to come in and bring that project in on time for Mayor Brown, ahead of schedule, and $12 million under budget.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and switch gears, and we're gonna move into a specific issue facing Houston. First, we'd just like to ask, this is a two-part question. How will you vote in November on, or October early voting, on the Houston Equal Rights Ordinance? Keeping in mind that the Texas Supreme Court has ruled that it would either be a yes for the ordinance or a no to vote against the ordinance. And after answering that question, why are you voting that way?
Why am I voting that way? Well, this ordinance is really, we're there to protect women. The whole issue now is about men having the ability to go into women's restrooms. I have a daughter, and I have concerns. Maybe it was perception before, but I'm concerned that it could be reality. So I stand on voting no to protect women.
So, there's a variety of factors that people use when they make decisions as City Council members. Can you name three primary quality-of-life indicators that you would use when you're making policy?
When I'm making policy, it's real easy. It's about, is this gonna be good for the Houston economy? Because at the end of the day, we want jobs here in the city. I want people to succeed. The best way for anybody, any family, to come out up like my family did years ago from poverty is to have good-paying jobs. And that's my focus, is to bring jobs here, create an environment where we have a good quality of life because we earn a good living. And when you have a job, that is the best feeling in the world.
So, like, name three that are the most important that you would look at?
Jobs, jobs, jobs.
Okay.
Well, now, if elected to City Council, you will be representing all of the people in Houston. How will you ensure that you are representing all of the people?
Over the years, I've traveled the 640 square miles of this city. People think I live in Kingwood. People think I live in Clear Lake. Some believe I live over on Memorial somewhere. Some believe I live in Spring Branch because I travel. It may be West Belfort. It may be the Belfort in the Asian community, the East End. People see Roy Morales everywhere.
So, just one more question, then we'll go into closing. Houston has a problem with obesity, and it's a problem that's exacerbated by food deserts. So what can the city do to increase access to fresh fruits and vegetables and other food in these areas?
Well, I think that, you know, I mentioned fast-foods, restaurants before. We do need to get rid of these food deserts. If you look at the east end of town, or you look, you go to District D, you see food deserts there. We need a quality of good foods like you see in other parts of the city. And that's why I believe, again, growing the economy, having good jobs out there, infrastructure, fixing our roads. You look in some of the minority areas of our city, our roads are horrible. If you don't have good roads, you don't have good infrastructure, you can't get those food markets into those areas. We need to improve those as well so we can get rid of these food deserts.
Okay. Well, we just have a couple minutes left, and we just wanted to kind of turn it over to you for a last word. Why should the voters of the city of Houston elect you as their at-large Position 4 Council member?
Well, first off, I'm a retired lieutenant colonel. As a matter of fact, I'm the only candidate in this race with an honorable discharge. Actually, I have two of them. I come with credibility. Duty, honor, country. Education, life experiences brings wisdom and good decision-making. I've been trained by our government. I've been trained by our city, and I have continued my education even up to this point. I bring ideas, ideas that are gonna make this city the greatest city on this planet.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we'll take just a minute's break, and we'll have our next candidate up in just a minute. Thank you. (Music) Women Voters of Houston Education Fund and the Houston Media Source. My co-host for tonight is Michael Webb. And what you just saw was Roy Morales, who was unable to be with us tonight unfortunately, but you saw his prerecorded general election conversation. And tonight, we are very fortunate to have Amanda Edwards with us today. And Amanda K. Edwards is an attorney and native Houstonian. Currently, Amanda practices law at Bracewell &amp; Giuliani LLP in Houston, where she solves complex issues relating to tax-exempt bond financing, public-private partnerships, community development projects, and nonprofit organizations. She has served as President of the Board of Directors for Project Row Houses in the historical Third War community and on numerous other civic boards and committees. Amanda is also a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Amanda has worked in community development corporations as a Community Building and Social Change Fellow and in the Georgia State Legislature. She also worked for Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee in Washington before earning her law degree. Amanda attended Eisenhower High School in Aldine ISD, Emory University in Atlanta, where she earned a degree in political science and served as student body president for the college and studied law at Harvard Law School. While at Harvard, Amanda served as Criminal Justice Institute Student Attorney, chaired the Harvard Black Law Students Association Spring Conference, and was awarded the Elaine Osborne Jacobson Award for her commitment to serving underserved populations in the healthcare law arena. Amanda is also a graduate of the Center for Houston's Future Business Civic Leadership Forum, Leadership Houston, and the United Ways Project Blueprint. She resides in Midtown and attends St. Monica Catholic Church in Acres Home. Welcome, Amanda.
Thank you for having me.
And now, we'll have our first question from Michael.
Great. Thank you for coming, Amanda. Houston is known as the country's most diverse city. What do you see as the value in our diversity? And what would you do to capitalize on this direction?
Absolutely. So, you're absolutely correct. Houston is one of the most diverse cities in the country, and I think that is a true strength of our city because that brings together not only an exchange of cultures, but also an exchange of ideas and experiences, all of which will make our city richer and more appealing to other people. I think we're not only a city that is strong in terms of the Texas market, but we are a national city and international city as well. And so I think those are strengths that are appealing to outside businesses, for example, that are looking to come into the city of Houston. They may have preconceived notions of a city in Texas, for example, but they have no idea how rich our diversity is. And so I think that is a huge strength that we have to continue to build upon, but not just in terms of representation and numbers, but also how are we actually cultivating the exchange of ideas among different communities and making sure that, as a city, we're actually providing opportunities for enrichment and growth and exchange of ideas. So that's something that I think is an exciting aspect of Houston that we can continue to build upon, and certainly I would be committed to doing that on council.
Houston has a vibrant theater and museum district, but many have criticized the city for not doing enough to support small arts organization and independent artists. If elected, what would you do to ensure that we have a well-rounded, thriving arts community?
Well, I will tell you, you've asked the right person because I'm a huge proponent of the arts. I happen to have chaired the Board of Directors of an organization called Project Row Houses for about two and a half years, and have been sitting on that board for more than about six years or so. And it's very critical to me that we continue to build upon our arts community, both big and small. We've got some of the most premier arts-based organizations, Houston Grand Opera, but we also have some of the most interesting and innovative arts programs and organizations in the city. I'm gonna go ahead and plug Project Row Houses as being one of them, but the nice part is it's one of many. There are several different initiatives happening across the city that we can be excited about. The new Match Building, which is a performing arts space for the types of organizations you're describing, will now have access to that type of space in the Midtown area. There are a variety of different avenues which people can pursue, whether it be performing arts, visual arts. And so we have to, as a city, support making sure that they have the resources that they need and that people have access to them. Many of those things can actually be tourist attractions in the city. I certainly tell people when they come to Houston, visit me, go over to Project Row Houses, but there are several other organizations and activities and initiatives, and so we need to make sure that organizations like the Houston Arts Alliance continues to thrive and provide resources and access to resources for those organizations, but that we are continuing to hold those organizations up in connection with making sure they're well-represented and at the table in certain, in a variety of avenues that might affect them. So I'm a big proponent, and we'll make sure that the arts community does have a voice at the table at City Hall.
On a slightly different note, Amanda, how can we improve law enforcement relationships with communities of color in the GLBT community?
Yes, that's a very timely question. And certainly, right now, you've heard a lot of discussion, even today, with the debates surrounding body cameras, for example. And all across our country, there's been a lot of alarm about kind of an antagonistic relationship between law enforcement and communities that feel like law enforcement officers are not necessarily there to protect them, but they have been there to, not necessarily protect them, but view them as suspects or part of the problem. I think that here in Houston, we have a unique opportunity. The Houston Police Department is well-positioned, I think, to continue on in a path that is constructive in terms of our community relations if we provide them the necessary resources to do that. So you've gotta make sure that you're providing your law enforcement officers necessary training opportunities. That's something that is a City Council issue because we're the ones making determinations about the budgets. And while public safety is a huge component of our general fund budget, it's up to us at City Hall to make sure that we don't start slashing that budget simply because it's large. It's large for a reason, and it's there to keep our community safe. Another way in which we can improve law enforcement relations with some of the communities that you've described is by implementing a community policing model. I think that's one of the ways in which you can really break down some of those barriers that you see or hear about in the news. If someone is a part of the community, is working in the community on a consistent basis, then they know the difference between someone who's an intruder and someone who might just simply like to wear their clothes a certain way, but is of no harm to the community. Knowing the difference between that is something that will bridge that gap between having an adversarial relationship with law enforcement and having the type of relationship that I think we all strive to have, which is one where our officers are there to serve and protect, and that there's a trust and an open relationship there. And I think we can get there. I think we've got an open-minded city, both in terms of law enforcement and in terms of our residents. And so I'd like to see us go in that direction and make sure that we're providing the resources to get there.
What are your plans to address issues like overcrowding and underperformance in Houston schools?
Yes, that's a big challenge. I think we see a number of our Houston public schools. I'm actually a product of public school here in Houston. I am a product of the Aldine Public School District, having gone to Eisenhower High School. And one of the things that you see is an issue where, you know, you might have, in my case, 1,000 kids in my freshman class. And so where does that kid go? You know, a kid, a student like I was, was very motivated, did well in school. We'll be fine in an environment like that, but what happens to the other children who might need a little more time, a little more attention? Does that child then fall by the wayside because of the fact that there's so many students and not enough resources to go around? And so I think that we need to pay attention to what's happening with our education system because that all feeds into the connected nature of what's happening in our city. If we don't have students who are well-prepared to fill the jobs of tomorrow, then we're creating a problem for tomorrow, which is an unprepared workforce. So we've gotta make sure that we're educating our public school students, not just relying on private schools or charter schools to do that, but having a pipeline that will provide for success irrespective of what type of school you go to. And so if you go to private school, great. That's great for you and great for, you know, in terms of your ability to succeed, but it shouldn't be a death sentence or a prison sentence for you to remain in the public school system. I think we need to make sure that we have plans for how are we going to promote education and where are we channeling those students in terms of those that are in our public schools, making sure those public schools have the resources that they need. I know certainly HISD, for example, is going through some changes right now in connection with leadership. One of the things that the new leaders will need to make sure is a focus is making sure that students are prepared. And we have to start very, very early to make sure that they truly are prepared, and I mean in terms of early childhood education. That's where it starts because if you start off behind, it's very difficult to catch up. And so if you don't have a parent, if your parents are not at home working with you on a consistent basis, then it's hard for you to then find ways to catch up while you're in the school environment with limited time and resources. So I think that's something that the city can work in tandem with, certainly the school districts. It's within the jurisdiction of the school districts, but certainly it should be part of the city's vision for the future of Houston, and I'm committed to making sure that's the case.
Awesome, Amanda. So you talked about investing in our youth to build a stronger workforce. Do you support raising the minimum wage for public and private employees? Why or why not?
I think it's very important that people have an opportunity to live, have a sustainable lifestyle and sustainable wages, that they can be independent. It's very, it's a draw on public resources if someone has to go on public assistance, has a work, has a job, but doesn't get paid enough money to support his or her family and so is on public assistance. That's a drain on public resources. It's going to be certainly, it's going to be some level of a burden or a drain in terms of some resources in connection with raising any type of wage in terms of some of our workers. But at the end of the day, I think it's important that people are able to support their families. I think it creates a trajectory for those children that will allow for success instead of them being further behind, instead of their parent having to pick up a second or third job, maybe they can spend some more time with their kids at home and work with them. So I do think it has trickle effects, and certainly it's not, there's no easy answer to that question in terms of how that looks or what exactly will happen. There'll be some unintended consequences for it, but I think in a realistic environment, I think the ultimate end goal in terms of what does that mean for the projected life outcomes for those students, I think that would make a difference in connection with their life outcomes.
Okay. And once we have wages that support Houstonians thriving, then they'll be getting around the city. So I would like to know, what's your vision for public transportation in Houston?
My favorite question. I think the city of Houston, we have to bake into our vision for our city the question of how we're going to deal with transit. Currently, we have a roadway system that continues to expand with road lane mileage. In fact, Houston has more road lane mileage than most major metropolitan cities, but has far fewer people actually to pay into the tax base to support that. So that creates a maintenance issue in terms of affordability of our roads. But in addition to that, we've got an issue in terms of trying to find other ways to transport people. We have been heavily reliant, if not exclusively reliant, on our roads and our freeways. And we've got, as we have more and more people discovering how great Houston is, which is great, and we should be attracting more people coming into the city, we've gotta find a way to manage those people. You cannot manage those people when they're stuck in gridlock traffic at 5 o'clock because the only way to go to and from where they have to go is on Shepherd, for example. We've gotta figure out, how do we give people an alternative? And so I am in support of multimodal transit options. And when I say that, that also includes things like bicycling. I think we've done a tremendous job with the Bayou Greenways Initiative to open up those jogging and biking trails. That's a tremendous job. And you see, Houston is actually becoming a biking community. That's not been something of the past, but again, it starts with an idea, and being willing to put those ideas into fruition, I think is critical. And so I would be a proponent of that, and I think that's the way we have to go as a city in order to be a city that realizes its potential and continues to grow and thrive.
Houston has been ranked the 15th worst major city in terms of income inequality. What are your plans to bridge the gaps caused by that fact?
I think a lot of that relates to how the city has been, you know, how people live in our city. It's a very, although we've got this rich diversity, it's a very segregated place in terms of different ethnic groups as well as in terms of class. And I think it's very important, when you think about lower-income people and their opportunities for growth and excellence, is to see other people model the behaviors that they want to emulate. And so if you live in a neighborhood that's full of poverty, and that's all that you see, and there is no other example, then your construct of what is possible suddenly becomes a little more limited. I think if we have environments in which we're mixing in terms of classes, I think that will be helpful. So some interesting approaches to housing, for example, can be ways in which we can kind of rid ourselves of this very segregated experience. But income inequality is certainly a problem that has far-reaching effects, not just in connection with someone's views about their potential and their life outcomes, but also in terms of health impacts and in terms of, you know, you have environments where there's a big gap between the rich and the poor. Certainly, you have lesser, poorer health outcomes for the whole. And so things like that are unintended consequences that we must be mindful of. So we should be looking for innovative ways to kind of create environments where people interface with each other. Some cities have, you know, a robust transit system with subways, for example, so people see each other, whether they like it or not, they're gonna see each other. But in Houston, a lot of our experience is in a silo in your own vehicle. You get in your garage, you get in your car, you drive to your office, then you get in the garage for your office, and then you go up the elevator, and you're in your office with your peers on your floor, and that's the only people that you see all day, other than your family. And we've kind of gotta create, you know, areas and opportunities for people to interact more with each other so that other behaviors are modeled, and they're good examples of that, including mentorship as well.
Okay, Amanda, as you know, Houston has a very strong mayoral system, and council members, council members have a little bit of limited power. So what's your strategy, or what would be your plan to affect change and navigate those limitations?
That's a great question. We have the strongest form of mayor, strongest form of mayor government, I think, in the country because, for a variety of reasons. But I think ultimately, it's important knowing that, that you have to have a very collaborative leadership style. We have 16 people on City Council. That's a lot of people around the horseshoe, as we like to call it, but there are 16 people at council. You also have a strong mayor who gets to set the agenda. So you have to be very collaborative, and you also have to have a humble leadership style. I don't think, you know, your desire to have your name or your agenda item up front and/or posture about something like that, I think, is a constructive use of time. You've gotta be able to use the art of persuasion and ability to pull people together and coalesce around an idea that people can get behind. So it's a challenge, certainly, but I think, you know, at least with my background as a transactional lawyer, as a municipal finance lawyer, I'm used to pulling different groups of people together to make the common thing happen. And so you have to focus on where those commonalities lie if you're going to be successful in a strong mayor form of government like this or a city council of this size.
Earlier, Ms. Edwards, you talked about being innovative to have Houstonians interact better with each other. How will you use technology to better serve and communicate with citizens?
I think that's a great question. I think several things. One, I think we can update, I would love to see some of our systems at City Hall updated that use technology. I just will tell you, as an example, having been a candidate now running for office, some of the filings I've made have not necessarily all been the most modern of approaches, and so that's just a small example, but we can update in terms of what people are expecting and apps, you know, apps to communicate, things like that. We can start utilizing those types of resources in addition to being able to go online and not necessarily keep everything related to paper. Some of the other things that we can do to kind of enhance people's quality of life is make technology integrated in some of our new public projects, thinking about innovative ways that we can integrate technology into some of our investments, our new buildings, our new spaces, our new public spaces, figuring out ways that these can be more of an attraction. And oftentimes, the way to do that is by integrating technology into them. So that would be something I'd be a huge proponent of as well, but we've gotta continue to make Houston as appealing as possible, be innovative about what we're doing in our city. I will say, a lot of the things about Houston that have been great over time have been big, bold ideas that seemingly were far-fetched when maybe they were initially conceived, but I think that's the way we have to continue to go if we're gonna grow in the way that our city deserves. Things like the Astrodome being the eighth wonder of the world at some point. Now, it seems, you know, almost such a distant memory, but at that time, that was a huge deal. NASA being located here in the Houston area. I mean, there have been several things that have been very innovative and large-scale and that have involved technology. And so I think we need to embrace innovative things, innovative ideas that involve technology, not just in terms of integrating it to the day-to-day, but also bigger projects for the future.
Okay. And we cannot have a candidate conversation without talking a little bit about pension problems. So unfunded pension liability is a major issue for the city of Houston. What are your ideas about how to address the current pension issues and how to prevent similar situations in the future?
Yes, so we've got a pretty significant unfunded liability for the city. It's about $3.2 billion of unfunded pension liability. So that is by no stretch of the imagination a small number. It's a very significant issue that we're facing. I think what we have to look at is what we've been doing and where we've been going wrong in that approach and how we can improve on the approach going forward. You've got police, fire, and municipal workers who have come and worked and participated in a system with the expectation that they would get a particular pension benefit at the end of their time for retirement. And then certainly, you've got these budgetary woes that we have in our city where it suddenly looks unsustainable to keep the pensions going in the same direction. As a deal lawyer, I think about where the leverage lies and how can we see common ground? I think that's the space and place that we need to operate most, not necessarily starting on opposite sides of the field. I don't think that's a good I don't think that's a good starting point. I think we need to try to get all groups together to find areas and spaces and places where they can work together to make sure that the unfunded liability continues, decreases and is substantially decreased as opposed to finding out ways that we can continue to bicker and sue each other and the like because that is how we've been, the path that we've been on. So I think having that collaborative approach about getting folks to the table and making a deal happen is what we should be committed to doing. And so certainly that's something on council I would be an advocate for doing is making sure that we're bringing all sides of the issue at the table and that we're having an open dialogue about what is sustainable and how we can make fair but serious modifications going forward.
According to the Pew Research Center, Houston leads the country in economic segregation, with the affluent more likely to live among the affluent, the poor among the poor, with fewer Houstonian, Houston neighbors hosting middle-class households. Professor Kleinberg has referred to residential economic segregation as one of our greatest challenges. What role can the city of Houston play in ensuring that there are thriving mixed-income, middle-class, and low-income neighborhoods in Houston?
Yes, great question and something I would be a proponent of. You know, I think a lot of our disconnect among people is a lack of, or a lack of interfacing with them. And so you have to find ways in which people interface with each other. And then you realize, oh, it's not so bad. This is okay. This person is not going to necessarily steal from me if we're in the same space or place. And so kind of removing some of those myths, certainly crime does relate a lot of the time to the, you know, poverty and the like, but it's not necessarily always the case that if there's someone who has less than, then there will be theft. And I think that's a fear that a lot of people have. We have to think about our housing policy and we often think about what incentives we're putting in place in terms of where people live. We don't have zoning here in Houston. Planning, you know, just depending on your neighborhood can be drastically different from one place to another. And so we need to think about ways in which we can provide natural environments where people can interact and develop, develop in terms of community. Park space, I think, has been a true, true plus for our city in that regard, in that respect. People come from all over the place to go to Discover Green, but we need to make sure that we're providing or making sure that there's access to workforce housing just as well as high-end housing. We need to make sure that we're providing those spaces and places for people to live, work, and play. And so I'd be committed to making sure that we're creating neighborhoods that are desirable, but also that provide those opportunities for us to all interface. I think most people will tell you the strength of Houston is its people, but if you don't have a chance to interface with the people, then you don't get a chance to really taste that flavor that most people love about Houston. And so I'd love to see a little more of an innovative approach to how we are developing our new communities, how we are revitalizing some of our older ones, but making sure that when we're doing that, it's a responsible way. You don't want to go in your neighborhoods that have been, you know, lower, underserved areas or low-income areas and simply get rid of all the residents that live there. What we were able to do in Project Row Houses is figure out a way where we could bring some new in, bring some revitalization into the community without displacing the residents. And so it's a question of the proper balance. And so this has been part of my background and experience, so something I would be very excited about on council.
Okay, when candidates speak of crime prevention, maybe not you, but generally speaking about how candidates speak about crime prevention, they often propose a formula of more cops equal less crime, when in reality, the systemic causes of crime are linked to issues of education, poverty, and opportunities. What crime intervention-prevention policies do you support that will systemically address crime?
Education, education, education. Education, I mean, you, the statistics are staggering. The, you can gauge the likelihood of someone's likeliness, likelihood to go to prison based on their third grade reading levels. And that is an awful statement that I just made, but it's factual. A lot of data comes in about where people, how they're doing at a very early age, like elementary school. And that's part of what formulates their trajectory on whether they're going to succeed or not, whether they're going to get into a life of crime or not. So we have to look, and that's why I mentioned early childhood education. While that's not a city council issue necessarily, certainly having that be a part of the common understanding of what some of the issues are in Houston, I think is important. You've got to have council members who are willing to advocate for those things. And early childhood education is key. Making sure that there are people who are willing to pick up the pieces where maybe someone at home is not able. There are a variety of reasons that people don't excel in school, but you want to make sure that you're putting people in position where they can succeed and have opportunities to do so. In addition to that, having opportunities to, for job mobility and training opportunities. We have some of the largest community college systems in the country, right here in Houston. Houston Community College, Lone Star College, all of those systems in which we could be, instead of saying to someone, "Oh, well, you didn't get into a four-year institution, good luck with that." We can say, "Why don't you consider HCC? Why don't you consider Lone Star?" And trying to better yourself and have ongoing educational opportunities there. And it doesn't have to stop by a certain age. You can be in whatever career point you are and say, "I want to take some classes to advance myself in this regard." And we need to be always having a constant conversation and dialogue about ways in which to do that. Certainly, we have a very robust nonprofit community here in Houston that has a lot of those referral services. But to the extent that you're not aware of a particular organization that's referring, City Hall needs to know who to tell you to talk to. It's not necessarily the case that it's a core competency of the city and so therefore we have to provide that service. But being able to tell your citizens where they can find those resources, I think is critical. In addition to that, also making sure that we're creating the jobs here. So we've got to make sure that we're not creating an environment that is anti-business or anti-job creation. We've got to make sure there are job opportunities being created and growing. And so we need to make sure that we're creating the proper incentives for, and not losing our businesses to outside suburbs, but making sure they want to locate here. So that addresses some of those quality of life issues that we've discussed earlier. People look at Houston and they say, "Mmm, traffic sounds like a mess over there." And so because of that concern, they may or may not choose to locate here. That is, I spent some time with my Center for Houston's Future Business and Civic Leadership Course, studying that question about what creates the dynamic for a business to want to stay or decide to leave. And transportation is actually a part of that because they don't want their employees not wanting to live in the city where they're relocating. They want their employees to want to be in that city and that place. And so people perceive Houston as having major traffic and congestion issues. So we've got to work on that so that we don't lose those opportunities for businesses to create more jobs. And so it's all interconnected at the end of the day. And certainly, we can't create policies that make it more difficult for job creation to exist.
You actually ran right into the next question. And so what additional policies, other than improving our infrastructure and our transportation, would you introduce to the city of Houston that would make our city more attractive than our neighbors to new businesses or businesses interested in relocating to Houston?
Yeah, so we've got to deal with the transportation issue. And that's why I say, even though it is a metro issue, so I will be clear. I am fully aware that metro has jurisdiction over transit. We need to, as a city, have a vision for where we're trying to go. If you don't have a vision, a clear vision that everybody buys into about what you're trying to be, who you're trying to be, when you want to be that, then it's very difficult to have a concerted effort of putting policies in place to helping you do that. I think we need to be working in tandem with a lot of the strengths that currently exist. I'll use, for example, we purposely diversified our economy. We did, we are an oil town, as you know, but we purposely diversified our economy years ago in seeing there being a need for diversification. Now we have the medical center, the largest medical center in the world, it's right here in our city. How are we providing incentives and encouraging businesses that they want to see relocate in the medical center? We should be, as a city, saying, "How can we support your desire to grow as a medical center?" That's the type of activity we need to be undertaking. Not necessarily saying we have all the answers off the bat, but conferring with the industry leaders, finding out what they want to see. They want to see more biotech, they want to see more medical device companies come here because that's an opportunity. We're losing revenue by not having those businesses located here. And then we need to ask, "What do we need to do for you in order to encourage those industry businesses to come to Houston?" So those are conversations we need to be having and working in tandem with our business leaders and business community to make sure we're really pushing the ball forward. Another example, energy, having the same conversations with them. All of the strengths and potential likely strengths that we currently possess. And then looking at having the vision or the imagination to think about what we'd like to be. You know, look at a city like Austin, for example. There was, there are, it doesn't always happen to be that you just stumble upon a certain industry. Sometimes there's a decision made and then you say, "We want this," and they start creating policies in place to get that type of businesses, those type of businesses to locate there. Similarly speaking, we need to evaluate, are there other industries we want here? And then creating incentives for them to relocate here. And I think that's the strategy we should employ.
You know, as you think about, you know, your constituents and representing people, I know there are many things that you'll have to consider to serve them best.
Yes.
But I would like you to narrow it down to three. So I'm going to ask you, what are the three primary quality of life indicators that you would use as a metric to develop policy around and serve your constituents?
Well, I think the first question, quality of life, I think it's kind of a core, core principle is make sure that you're safe, right? So if you don't have safety, if you don't have safety in your community, you really don't have much of a community. And so unfortunately, a lot of people don't feel safe in their community. So that's the first question we always have to make sure we're answering with respect to any quality of life concerns. The next one is terms of, is looking at neighborhood conveniences. Do you have the basic conveniences that anybody would want to have in their life? For example, can you walk down the street? There may be a variety of reasons why one cannot. There may not be streetlights on your, you know, streetlights available to you. There may not be, it may not be safe. There may not be sidewalks. Those are the types of questions we need to ask. Is a walkable, convenient neighborhood or community, what that means for you? It doesn't necessarily mean in all areas, is it high density? Or does it have mixed-use developments? In certain areas, that might in fact be the case. But in, just making sure people have access to that, access to quality conveniences like food. We can't continue to, you know, exist with food deserts all over our city. We need to make sure that's an area in which we're improving and revitalizing some of our underserved neighborhoods. And then finally, making sure that we're being innovative in our approach in terms of health and connecting with the natural environment. Park space is a huge indicator of that. Do we have enough green space? We've done a tremendous job in the last several years in increasing the amount of green space we have across the city. And I think that's a true indicator of a space where people desire to live. People love parks. That's a desirable quality for a city. So making sure we have those jogging trails, those parks, and making sure they're connected. I think those are the areas that we have to look at and focus on if we're thinking about quality of life issues for our Houston residents.
Ms. Edwards, I would like to also ask, it would not be on, oh. It is clear that conversations around the city's revenue cap may continue to surface in the next term.
Yes.
What effect do you think, positive or negative, the revenue cap is currently having on the city? And what is your stance on whether or not to lift or modify it?
I think the revenue cap creates a huge pressure on this, already the city's difficult budgetary strains. I think the initial concept was derived from a concern of overspending or spending that was not under control. And so the revenue cap was created several years ago and took effect or had an effect on the city about last year for the first time in terms of us actually reaching the ceiling of spending whereby the formulaic measures would kick in for what we could take in for revenue. That creates a dynamic, I think, that's probably not the precise solution for the problem, the right-sized solution for the problem. I think we need to look at ways in which we can not have unintended consequences resulting from it, such as public safety. Right now, public safety takes up about over 60% of our general fund. And so that will be a temptation when we start having more, more, when the revenue cap starts to have more of an impact on us, there will be a temptation to look at those public safety dollars just to make those slashes. And I think that would be an ill-advised move without a strategic look at what those dollars actually mean. And so I think by having kind of an arbitrary cap based on a formula, it doesn't take into account what the true needs of the city are in terms of those dollars, among others. And so I would be a support, I would be in support, particularly as it relates to public safety, to modification of that revenue cap. I don't want to see our neighborhoods be any less safe than they currently are because of the fact that we have imposed this cap on ourselves. There are no other Texas cities that have a similar cap. So for us to have done that, I think what we should have done or what we should do is look at, if we have a spending problem, looking at ways to be more responsible with our spending. There are certainly areas of overlap that we have with the county, the city and the county. Looking at ways in which we can be smarter with our dollars. Certainly, I'm an advocate for that, but not necessarily just cutting our austerity measures just for austerity measure's sake. I think we need to look at how we are spending our dollars and make sure they're being spent wisely.
I'm going to ask you a fun question.
Okay, you weren't having fun with revenue caps and pensions?
But I like, you know, getting to know the personhood about people that are running for office. And so I think about someone who's running for a city council position, being someone who's diehard Houston, Houstonian, Houston fan, right? So when I think about something that's that-so Houston, it's something that I love about Houston, I try to, I would say it was, it would probably be Frenchie's Chicken, right? So I would like to ask you, what's that-so Houston for you? What's your Houston thing that you absolutely love?
Oh, no. So now I'm going to get in trouble all over the place. I'm not going to pick a plate, I'm not going to pick a food place because I don't want to get in trouble with anybody because I love all of our wonderful cuisine. But I will say, what's-so Houston is probably, for me, Project Row Houses. I think it kind of speaks to the personality of Houston, which is really kind of this innovative space that where so many different unlikely things meet together. And, but that people are very interested in really helping each other. And so you see people from all walks of life come together under that umbrella of that organizations and they're very inspired by the mission. And I think that's what Houstonians are like. I think we love, we love philanthropy, which is very cool. That's-so Houston to me is how engaged people are about giving back to the community. It's almost an expectation. It's kind of like, how can you not do that? And that's unusual about a city. Most of the time, especially, and I'll say, even with our younger generation, it's expected you get into some activity where you're serving others and you're engaged and that's the way we interface. And I love that about our culture. It's just all of our service and philanthropic activity. And so Project Row Houses is one great example of it. It's not the only, but one great example.
For those of us, I've heard you talk about Project Row Houses twice now. For those of us not familiar with it, can you talk about in more detail and describe the mission?
Yeah, 20 years ago, the organization was formed. There were some dilapidated shotgun houses that were the source of instability, if you will, in the northern part of the Third Ward community. And a group of artists came together and said, "Hey, why don't we use these houses, not just as a source of how, as a space where the city is falling, I mean, the community's falling apart, but why don't we use this to help us transform the neighborhood?" And so I was like, "What do you mean by that?" And so they took the houses, they rehabbed them, and they created what we now call our art houses, in which we have artists from all over the country that come in and do installations. And with those installations, we have these grand openings with, which we call rounds, where we invite everybody in the community to come. So residents inside the community, resident, and people from outside of the community, people from all over come. There are lectures, there's conversation about arts, there's conversations about neighborhood. And there's a forum called, we do something called social practice, where it's basically the community is the art, the canvas, where we're transforming the community by providing the social service needs that meet the needs of the community. We're providing those services. And in exchange, the community itself is thriving more. And so part of our, the part of the theory is to make sure that the theory is, that the community is a part of that solution and that you don't lose sight of the community when you're thinking about how we're going to help revitalize the community. And so it's been a very interesting experience. It's evolved over time, but something I find to be extremely exciting and have been very fortunate to be a part of it. And so that's why I use that as an example of what Houston can be. Because Houston is very innovative and unique and there's a lot of things that don't necessarily seem to match. But somehow, we make it all fit together and we've become this very diverse city in Texas that's now going to be the third-largest city in the country and something that I think most people are excited about.
I would like to know if that was a defining moment for you or something that you can point to that led you to want to seek public office?
You know, I think it was, I can't say a defining moment. I will say, I've I will say, I've always had a deep-seated passion about Houston. I'm a native Houstonian, born and raised, left, lived in four other U.S. cities before coming back to Houston. Lived in New Orleans, I've lived in Washington, I've lived in Boston and Atlanta. And all of those experiences, I think in the back of my head, I always said, Houston could do that. And I would always say, why can't we do that in Houston? And, and the things that we, I liked about the other cities, I'd always say that to myself. And I've, I came back to the city and I, my work as a municipal finance lawyer, I get to work on all kinds of public purpose projects, build schools, build hospitals, facilitate public-private partnerships. So I get a chance to kind of see, have a really interesting, unique perspective about what's happening in the city, but I still see a lot of gaps. And so with my professional work, I get a chance to see what we're doing, but then I see where those gaps lie. And so it's always been something that's nagged at me in terms of, we really need to do this on a policy level. But again, I was not in that role to make those determinations. And so it was a combination of that with an understanding that in city of Houston, you have a very strong mayor form of government, as we already know. So if you're going to be impactful, why not try to come in with a new mayor to impact the, impact policy that way? And so that's, I think, kind of how the timing came to be, is realizing that we're going to have a new mayor. And then having initiatives passed, like the Buy You Greenways initiative signaled to me, I said, hmm, city of Houston does want some pretty big, bold stuff. And if you, if you provide the leadership and vision for it, people want to sign on to it. And so that's where that excitement comes from, where I know that people here want to see new things. They want to see innovative things, but they need the leadership to push us in that direction. And so I've got that passion and certainly have a vision where I, where I think Houston can go and should go. And I want to have the community buy into that and have that be a collaborative process, of course. And certainly, but the most important part, you got to have the skills to be able to have that come to fruition. So I think I bring a unique skill set to the table with regard to my background and history in terms of neighborhood revitalization and finance, municipal financing, where I think we can get the pieces of the puzzle to fit together and it'll be very exciting.
Great. Ms. Edwards, this is probably my final question.
Excellent.
But you hear, especially throughout this election season, you hear a lot about potholes.
Yes.
So I have to ask. In a city as large as Houston, building and maintaining infrastructure is a challenge. How do you think the city should tackle its infrastructure issues, including how to pay for it, most importantly?
Yeah, I think that's a great question and it's one of my top priorities as a city council member. We've got a short-term and a long-term solution to that, as far as, as I'm concerned. We have a dynamic in which we've got a city with about four times the road lane mileage as a Chicago, for example. But we've got far fewer people to pay into the tax base to support all of that roadway, all of that infrastructure that we have. So you've got a, you've got a setup or a system that is not set up for, to be able to sustain itself. So I look at this from both a long-term perspective and a short-term. Short-term, we've got to figure out, how do we make up for the decades and decades of failure to repair and maintain our roadways? Well, I think a dedicated revenue stream is the only way you can make up for that lost time, because we haven't been maintaining our infrastructure under the ground. And certainly, we haven't been maintaining our infrastructure on the ground, because that's why you have the potholes. So to me, when I see a pothole, it's, it's, it is definitely an example of a much deeper financial issue that we have as a city. So kind of unweaving, or un, unweaving some of that entanglement, I think is critical to that and figuring out, how do we re-weave this so that it actually works? The longer-term, I think, solution to that is thinking about how do we bring more people into the city to be able to pay for what we do need to pay in terms of maintenance? Well, you're not going to do that if you don't have transit options. You're not going to do that if you don't have good education systems. And so we have to think about all of the reasons why people choose not to live in Houston and fix those things and make sure that when we do bring more people in the city, we're able to better manage them, because right now, we're not equipped to really manage a huge infusion of new people into our city. And so that's one of the things I'm committed to doing at the city council table, is having both a short-term and a long-term solution to this issue, because it certainly wasn't something that came about in a year's time. This has been something in the works for many, many decades. And so we've got to have a long-term way out of this, as well as a shorter-term way out of this, so that we can stop tearing up our cars when we drive down the street. So I'm excited about that issue, because it's, it's complicated, but you've got to have both perspectives if you're going to actually make a difference in that regard.
Well, thank you. Well, I think we have come to the end of our conversation today. We thank you for being with us. Again, this conversation is on behalf of the Legal Women Voters of Houston Education Fund and Houston Media Source. I'm Harrison Guy and my co-host today was Michael Webb.
Well, thank you for having me. I've enjoyed it and I just want to say that I'm excited to enter into this election cycle and, and hopefully take office come this January, because I think the city of Houston, while it does have some major critical challenges that it's facing, it also has some key opportunities. And if we're not careful, we could miss those. And so I want to be the leader at the city council table with the vision, passion and the ability to make a difference for the long term. So thank you.